Pastor Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Can we bow our head in prayer? Father, we thank you that we can gather this evening in peace. Father, we pray for this council meeting tonight that the members and the mayor come together on issues for this city that benefit the citizens. God, we thank you for their commitment to this community. And we also pray for the police officers that put their lives on the line every day for us to keep us protected. God, thank you for these people and the office girls downstairs that do such a good job. We thank you for them too, Father. And may your hand of blessing be upon this meeting tonight and this nation, Father. We're going through turmoil in this nation, and I believe it's not done, God, but help us. Help us to get through this. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You didn't hear anything today, did you?
Hi, Mom.
Hello.
So we will call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the other glorious land, one nation, under God, in the Lord, with which we have justice for all. Devin, would you take the roll筒key? I'm in the elevator. I was waiting for a second. I don't see anybody coming out. Craig Elliott.
Here.
Mindy Galbavi.
Here.
Adam Grass. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Terry Wood. Is there any council members participating on Zoom that I do not recognize the number? All the county floor except council members Adam Grass and Terry Wood. Terry Wood I spoke with on the phone. He slipped on his porch today and is injured and will not be in attendance tonight. Asked to be excused. So I just need a motion concerning that.
Are you in motion to defer?
To excuse his absence, which is particularly important because this would have been his fourth missed meeting in a row.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion by Craig, seconded by Bob, to excuse Terry Wood from this council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was December 17.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the December 17, 2020 regular meeting.
As moved and seconded, all those in favor of waiving the reading and approval of the minutes, vote by saying aye.
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 And now we have preapproved reports and presentations. And in that list that I have is our treasurer and superintendent, Devin, is that? I'm not quite following this. Is that where we would have them speak? The preapproved reports and presentations, is that where they speak?
Okay, so we did hear.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Preapproved reports.
Oh, okay. I did this last time too, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We need to back up again to get the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for that, or does anyone see any reason that we need to amend it?
Would the agenda be adopted as per?
All those in favor of approval of the agenda, vote by saying aye.
Aye. Kevin?
Okay. And then we have done the reading and approval of the minutes. And now we have preapproved reports and presentations with Bob Adke and the planning commission chairman, who has some guests with us today to our conference.
Well, thank you. And we're gonna give you some answers to questions that you would have. And hopefully, everybody went to the website and looked at the website so that you can generate your own question. But we've got Justin Sprague here, and he is currently under contract with the city of Perry. And he is the vice president of CIB, which is Community Image Builders. And we've got Justin Morvath over here. Everybody knows Justin. He is the president and CEO of the Chiawashe Economic Development Partnership. And on Zoom, we should have Charles Donaldson. And he is senior community assistance team specialist for Region Six with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which were in Region Six. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to Justin Sprague and let him start. And ask him any questions that you want, because these two gentlemen, these three gentlemen are the experts.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to talk to you about tax increment financing and the possibility of creating a DDA, Downtown Development Authority. So I do have before you a presentation that I prepared for this evening. We don't have, yes, sir.
Bob, can you turn on the light? Somebody turned that light on.
I know. I thought maybe if it was someone wrong or something. All good?
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So quickly about myself and CIB planning. We are a planning, economic development, and marketing firm based out of Flint in Michigan. We have four, four full-time employees, one part-time employee, and work with a number of sub consultants. Previous to me joining CIB four years ago, I was Justin Morvath for Flint and Genesee County, doing economic development, business attraction, business retention for that community and county for eight years. And I've been a planner for about 20 years. We currently do a number of, work with a number of communities in the area, both through the Michigan Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, and also as a primary consultant to the city of Owasso, the village of Fallerville nearby, and a few other communities in the area, Lansburg as well. And I've been working with the city of Perry now for about a year and a half, not full-time, but on an as-needed basis when the previous mayor and zoning administrator felt that they needed some additional planning expertise and assistance with specific projects. So tonight, I wanted to talk to you quickly about tax increment financing, what it is, what a DDA is, and sort of what are the components with that. So tax increment financing. Tax increment financing is basically the ability to capture new revenue and growth for a certain district. There are a number of increment authorities, but the primary one that most people are familiar with is the Downtown Development Authority, which is now under PA 57 of 2018. And allows the DDA to capture local property taxes to pay for expenses within that defined district. It also allows for a brownfield tax increment finance authority, corridor improvement finance authorities, neighborhood improvement authorities, local development finance authorities, and so on. So there are a number of different types of authorities that can be utilized to capture increment finance. So creating and adopting the DDA plan. When you do decide that a DDA is right for you, you would pass a resolution of intent to create a DDA and create an ordinance that would be adopted by the city to put that DDA into place. There are two parts of a Downtown Development Authority that regulate how those increment finances are captured and spent. One is your development plan, and one is the tax increment finance plan. The purpose of the development plan is to define your boundaries of the DDA, to establish the need for improvement. So what we mean by that is, under the statute, it calls for an economic need for capturing that increment finance, such as disinvestment in the community or need to improve older buildings in the community to inject capital and help to finance those projects. Part of that is also to engage the public and the stakeholders and helping, or allowing them to help you create a vision for how you would like to improve the community and lay out the ways that you would like to expend those increment captures, and then to develop a vision for that district. This is a sample from the city of Farmington, where we do work with their DDA, just showing what a proposed or potential outline for a district could look like. So what you're seeing here on the large map is the actual district for the downtown that is under capture. And then in the small inset, you see the entire boundaries of the city of Farmington. Now, what I wanted to talk about here is, when you're looking at setting your boundaries for the district, multiple communities have done it both many ways. Some communities have kept that district very small and compact and truly confined to their downtown, and have captured on that space and reinvested in that space. Other communities, like one of my client communities, the city of Fenton, however, has created a very large district that expands way beyond the downtown, out to the expressway, encompasses the entire commercial corridor, where we have Target, TJ Maxx, and a number of other national retailers. And when they set that up, they did that because that area out there had not been developed. And so they wanted to ensure that they were able to capture that new development and that increment revenue from that new development to reinvest into the downtown. As a result, we now have three new multi-story, four-story buildings, mixed-use buildings downtown, that the DDA was all able to support, provide some incentive to helping that project work. And so when you're thinking about creating a boundary, I would not advocate for a small boundary. I would not advocate for a large boundary. I would look at the numbers. Look at what the assessed assessment and potential capture could be, and then make your decision, because I can say from experience, it's easier to set up a large boundary first and then contract if you need to. It's more difficult to set up a small boundary and then expand if you need to, because every time you open up the plan for amendment, you then have to go back to all of the taxing jurisdictions and request their opt-in. And some may not do that. They may opt-in the first time, but may not want to opt-in the second or third time. So that's something always to think about as you're doing this. So the purpose of the development plan is to identify improvements within the district that will catalyze redevelopment. And it's very simple. As you look at the allowable expenditures of that increment finance, you think about all of the projects that may help catalyze development in your downtown area. It could be infrastructure. It could be streetscaping, facade improvements. It could be purchase of property. It could be development of new property. There is a large array of options available to the DDA for the expenditure of those funds. But you have to list it in your development plan to justify the expenditure of those funds. The purpose of the TIF plan, what we call the Tax Increment Finance Plan, is to actually look at the capture or the projected capture that will occur as a result of the district. It will explain the purpose and the meaning of the tax increment finance. It will provide tables that clearly explain tax capture for the city of Perry. It will show how the tables will value, how the taxable value will increase. And then it will show how that increment will grow over time. It will also show how the taxes will be utilized for each project that you've identified in your development plan. It will show which taxing jurisdictions will be captured from and what that impact of that taxing jurisdiction, what that capture will do to that jurisdiction. It will determine the time for the capturing of taxes, as well as the term. So is it a 20-year plan? Is it a 25-year plan? Is it a 15-year plan? And then what is going to be done with that increment capture? And so, for example, a lot of communities, when they're first establishing the DDA, may not have the operating revenues upfront for the operation of that DDA. So oftentimes, they'll borrow from the jurisdiction, the parent jurisdiction, to cover that first year, and then once that tax increment capture comes in, repay that. Not saying that you have to do that, but that's an option. So this would explain that term of how any borrow or repayment would work. It would also highlight all of the properties that are included in the district and show that in a specific table by property identification number, parcel identification number, and the ownership of that parcel, the zoning of that parcel, and then what the actual use of that parcel is, whether it's commercial, whether it's vacant, and so on. So this is the crux of tax increment financing. You'll find it on slide nine. Essentially, what you have when you're establishing the district, you create your map, and then you take all the properties with the act, and then set this baseline. This is the total assessed value for the entire district. Everything under here, through the entirety of the plan, will still be paid to the local jurisdiction and all of the other taxing jurisdictions. Any new increase in the value of that district will be captured by the DDA and will be permitted to be spent within that district, excluding schools. You can no longer capture schools under the new act. And then at the end of the term of the plan, without an amendment or an extension, then you can see all of the tax revenues are again made whole to all taxing jurisdictions. But we like to show this slide because it's kind of a really clear example of saying, just because you cap the assessed value of the district doesn't mean that the jurisdictions that are currently taxing there are not going to continue to get that amount of taxable value through the duration of the plan. They will get everything under that baseline. DDA will only capture that that is increment above that base for the duration of the plan. Capture is both real and personal property tax. However, property tax has been pretty much, or personal property has pretty much been eradicated under the previous governor. May not capture school debt millage and may capture debt millage from others. Expenditures must be spent within the district boundary, except for some infrastructure, and a maximum of 80% of annual revenues can be pledged to repay bonds. So in the past, some DDAs have bonded for infrastructure work and other projects within the district. The maximum amount of the total capture that would be in the bank account, so to say, 80% of that is what's available for repayment of bonds. You cannot use 100%. This is a table to show how we project growth within the district, as well as our projected tax capture through the duration of the plan. This will show how existing taxes will continue going to taxing jurisdictions, and then future increases will go to the DDA. Capture will increase faster when redevelopment does occur, when you have new development. And more specifically, if you have properties within the DDA that are currently undeveloped, those are the properties where you'll see the most capture. And then the city again can bond from using reliable income from the TIF, but that must be approved by council. There is a new tool that we have developed at CIB that we have implemented in several of our communities with DDAs called project-specific tax capture. Most DDA plans are district-wide, use funding for public improvements. Project-specific tax capture, instead of having the money from a specific redevelopment opportunity, so for example, if a new four-story building were to be developed in downtown Perry, and there was a gap in financing with that developer, the DDA could establish what that gap is and contribute or commit to contribute taxes assessed and captured off of that new development back to that development for a duration of time as an incentive to help close that financial gap. One of the nice things about that tool is in the past, communities have either bond or raised millages to help pay for infrastructure or assist with development. In this case, the borrow is on the developer. If you were to say to them, okay, here's a $2 million project, you can finance $1.6 million of that, and we'll finance the remainder of the $400,000, they can take that to the bank, borrow against that, and then whatever many years it takes to repay that, you could repay that with project-specific tax capture on that specific project. So it's really nice when the community doesn't have to borrow. Then if the economy crashes and property values crash again, you're not on the hook for paying back that debt, even when it's in the negative. When you evaluate project-specific applications, you want to make sure that you had a fair and consistent application process. You need evaluation criteria to determine that there actually is a financial need, and make sure that it is a redevelopment that is a priority for the community. And you do want a development agreement in place, meaning that if the DDA were to agree to commit some project-specific capture back to the developer, you want an agreement in place that says they are going to do everything that they say they will do in completing that development, or you'll have a way of clawing back that commitment. So that's my brief and quick summary of the DDA process, and so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and look forward to speaking with you.
Does anyone have questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I didn't study this very much, but I did study a little bit. The wording is can get the tax increase. Is there a percentage that's, so let's say a property increased by $10,000. Does the DDA get that $10,000, or is there a percentage that would get to the DDA and then go to the other percentage go to the city?
So when I go back to that chart, the city would still capture the mills on that assessment that were in place at the base year of the assessment.
Correct.
Anything above that, the DDA would capture the mills from the city and the county on that assessment.
The total, the total increase in the mills?
Correct.
Is that negotiable?
It is.
So the city says, oh, you can't take 100% of that, but we'll do 50% or whatever?
It is. There are a number of DDAs that have executed agreements. I'm drawing a blank on what we call them right now, but basically a make-whole agreement, where they can agree to share additional revenue above and beyond the capture with the local municipality. And in some instances, we've seen where the county particularly would opt out where those agreements not in place. So certain communities, counties are willing to give up a share of that capture, knowing it's going to be a good thing for the community, but aren't willing to give up all of it. So we call it a passer.
Maybe another option, Bob, would be, and I've seen this happen, where maybe you don't give the money back, but there's an agreement where the DDA agrees to pay for certain city services. So maybe it's whatever, DPW for cleaning up the downtown, rather than that come out of the city general fund, it could come from the DDA.
DDA, okay.
So that's another option, too.
And the, your scale here is, I'm assuming that's just an arbitrary number, 35, or is that the standard life of a DDA agreement? And then it gets renegotiated?
No, so we just like to scale that out and show a period of time it was arbitrary. Most plans go for 20 years and then can be expended or extended. I need to look at the statute, Act 57, because now I believe statutorily, they are mandatory at 20 years with an expansion at the end of that 20 years. But you have a number of communities that have had DDAs for 40, 50 years now. And part of Act 57 was put in place to, I guess, limit that ability to do that, because really, the purpose of the DDA in its glory was to ensure new fiscal or financial development, economic development in your downtown core areas.
My other question is on boundaries.
Go ahead. I'm just letting you know that Mr. Donaldson is...
Sorry, I wasn't looking her up.
Mr. Donaldson is trying to speak, so I'll just...
One more question. Is he gonna speak? Go ahead. I got in a mood, so.
Yeah, thanks for your patience, limited technical abilities, and my inability to travel. Thanks so much, and really want to thank you again for that. Can you just add a little bit of context? One point, like, DDA is like development. And really, like, in your, and it's a process to kind of help that man with your goals for you down, and really, the dollars that you're collecting to kind of...
We lost him.
Yep. Yep. Very verbal.
Could you understand at all what he said?
Not much.
Couple words.
It's the second time that he's hopped off, so I'm afraid he must be struggling with his own internet service. I'll let you know when he appears again.
Why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
My question on the boundaries, because Bob brought it up, and he wasn't sure if it was true or actual or whatever, but can we, because we have this downtown area, and then we have the expanded area. So can we go down M52 and then come in and out around residences? Or do we have to pick a 50-foot swath and say that's our DDA?
No, you can, you can sort of, I guess, for lack of a better word, gerrymander your district.
Okay.
But it needs to be contiguous. So if you are gonna go in and around residencies, you can do that, if you just want to make sure that it is contiguous. So you could run it all the way down 52 and get all the properties, you know, out there by the expressway. And if you needed to just run a script down 52 to do that, you could do that, but you still need to be contiguous.
Okay, as long as it's continuous, because I know the mayor lives down there. I don't think she wants to pay the extra for being a DDA, but we can go in and out to do that? Okay.
Right, right. And there would be no, there would be no extra payment, so to say. Taxes wouldn't go up.
No, I understand that, but it's, there's other, could be other issues if you have residents in a DDA.
Sure. And by statute, if there are more than 100 residents in the DDA, then you have to have a citizens advisory council, and they would be the ones responsible for helping to create the plan and develop the projects and the vision of the plan, and would need to be kept in the loop with the board to advise on decisions for expenditures of tax increment revenues.
But the threshold is 100 residents?
100 residents.
Okay. That's not, because like, I know downtown, there's a few apartments above the businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be fine, as long as it's under 100, you don't need to have that citizens advisory council.
Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson is attempting to join you guys.
Who's Mr. Donaldson? Who's Mr. Donaldson?
He's our state economic development coordinator.
Yep.
For our region.
All right.
Okay, I've just asked him to unmute, so hopefully...
Yes, I'm back. Sorry about that, I'm having internet issues. I'm not sure how much you heard, but I'll make it really brief, that the DDA, you know, at its intent is really an economic development tool, and you kind of come up with the plan for what you wanna do with your downtown through that, and then you fund that.
For the personal property taxes, is that negotiable? Can't they do just the real and leave the personal, or does that pass through the personal taxes for the DDA? If that building is in the DDA?
I mean, anything can be negotiable. I mean, I don't know what the level of personal property is. It depends on...
Several that have $80,000 and above, though we still collect personal taxes for that. But most all of us of them have all been, they are claiming that.
Sure.
How long does a DDA have to be in existence to be able to bond?
Right, very good. So from the point of creation, they are eligible to bond, but it would have to be approved by city council, and there would have to be, you know, good credit and that sort of thing, and so you'd have to have justification for it for the type of project that you want bond for, but there is no term on when they can or cannot.
Well, I'm just wondering what happens when the taxable value goes down to what the initial start of the DDA is or is lower, and you have bonds out, what is the backup for that? Is that the city's then responsibility, or is that...how does that handle?
No, that is a difficult situation. If bonds are issued and revenues are due on those bonds, and the capture does go below the base value, the community is still on the hook for those bonds, one way or another.
The city?
Yes, yes. Yep, so I personally prefer the DDAs don't bond. I wait for them to build up their revenue through the tax increment finance process, and then utilize that to do their project, or like I said, through the project-specific tax capture, utilizing those to make commitments on future collections.
Maybe you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to understand, does Recodeify Tax Increment Finance Act, that is the current version of the original DDA?
Correct. So Act 57 is the act now that governs DDAs, and it replaced...
Oh, gee. Okay.
I heard the...
Isn't all one?
That updated...
Yeah, they did, and they added a few items. So what it did is it brought all of the taxing finance authorities under one statute for one. So this bill now directs how DDAs operate, directs how corridor improvement authority operates, tax increment finance authority, local development finance authority, and there are some things that they've added in here, such as provisions around duration and reporting now that is required to the state on how those tax increments are being captured and utilized. And this really was a good thing for that, because there were so many different authorities under different statutes. Some have different ways how they're adopted, some have different ways how they're created, some have different ways on how their boards operate. So this really worked to kind of bring that together, but yes, Act 57 is the act now that is in effect.
Another question, is I've been told that there does not have to be deterioration in order to establish a DDA. What it says right at the beginning is to correct and prevent deterioration?
Yes.
Does that mean there has to be some deterioration?
Not necessarily flight or deterioration, as you think about it. We have to show through the tax increment finance plan and the development plan that there is economic inactivity within the district. So if you have buildings that are aged 50, 60, 100 years old, that have not had any new investment in them for a period of time, if you have infrastructure that is aged that has not had investment in it for a period of time, or in general, revenue collections are down within that district, then we can make the economic case that by capturing these taxes and putting it into the increment finance, that we are going to spur economic growth within that district, whether that is, again, building new buildings, buying and selling property, assisting current property owners with facade improvements and beautification, there's a number of different things that you can do that spur economic growth, but we have to make that justification that economic growth is needed, and that there's been an inactive period of time where economic growth has not occurred.
As regards capturing tax increment, we talked earlier about an undeveloped piece of property, once the DDA is in place, becomes a developed piece of property. How do you handle tax increment? I'm assuming if you're collecting taxes on an empty piece of real estate, now you've got a small business on there, I would assume the 100% of that increment does not go to the DDA.
Correct, well, it's just like shown here. So whatever that assessed value is at the time of the base year, if that's a vacant property, then that's the assessed value for that property, and that's the value that would still be collected and distributed to all of the taxing jurisdictions. Any increment above that, then would go to the DDA.
Understand. So basically, all of the taxable value of the building and other associated things becomes DDA income?
Correct.
Except for schools.
Except for schools.
Except for schools.
Correct, and libraries, libraries can opt out as well.
Unless the DDA is established with a different person.
Yep.
Which is possible.
Yep.
On your slide up there, the second half of the, after the 20 years, where it says post-TIF tax revenue is all red, what is meant by that versus the...
So at this point, if the plan were to expire at 20 years, beyond this, all of the taxing jurisdictions that the DDA captures from, at that point, go back to their original taxable value?
What else to any funds, anything that went on during the time that the DDA was in, was viable?
Was viable? So if, in our view, if the DDA was established and had a pool of money and was planning to end their existence, we would wanna find a way to expend those funds prior to that cease of existence.
Okay.
And pay off all debts, they're obligated to pay off all debts and bonds that they may have, or other agreements for debt that they have. It would not be a situation that I'm aware of, I can check into this, and it might be something for a municipal attorney to answer, but I'm not sure if there's a situation where then that money would be just redistributed back to those taxing jurisdictions. It's possible, but I don't know that.
Something that I've been, said, I've heard a couple times, is that the DDA helps with keeping our taxes within the community, especially those going to the county.
Correct.
And number one, can you explain that, what that means, and two, does the county not have the ability to opt out, just like the schools and them things do also?
They do, so the county can opt out, maybe the mayor knows. What is the current, not our homestead, capture for the city that are around 48?
This mayor doesn't know that.
Forty.
Forty? And that's including county and everything?
Yep.
And then how much of that is purely city millage?
13.5872.
Okay.
This is our trust.
So...
And what, how much of the schools, is that 18?
Schools is 18 for the operation, school operation, and I believe it is, I'm gonna say six for this school debt. And then we have the community district library, we have SASSA, which is our ambulance.
Yep.
That we collect millages for them.
Sheriff and...
Nope.
That's all the county.
What about transit authority?
Nope.
SADA?
SADA, yeah, SADA we do. SADA we have a, yeah, we collect for them.
But there is a county assessment, though, right?
It's like 1 point something.
How about 911 and those services?
That goes through.
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging, Medicare, MSU Extension, Veterans Relief, Veteran Services, all the drains assessments, that's all county that goes through with it.
So when you look at the city alone, 13.5872. And then when you look at the non-homestead and the homestead, which is 40, basically everything from that 13 to 40 is leaving the community. And going to pay for other things.
Minus the schools, minus the 18, so...
Right, minus the schools.
So if you're looking at nine, about eight and a half percent, then that's actually leaving.
Possibly. We would have to go do the actual calculations on it, to see what the full county capture is, but when you have the DDA, now you're recapturing that, and that capture that would go to those taxing jurisdictions is now staying local. So that's what we mean when we say you're keeping additional monies from leaving the community.
That's as long as they vote to allow it to happen?
To allow. If they opt out, then they're out. And a lot of communities, when they're putting these plans in place, begin those conversations with those taxing jurisdictions, and in some instances, have gone the distance in creating the authority, if only one or two of those jurisdictions opt out. But if you have a significant, or all of them opting out, then at that point, you're only capturing on your own 13 mills. So there's really no point giving it.
If I might, and some of you may know this, some of you may not, to your, can you go to the other TIF slide there, the different authorities, Justin?
Want to give a little more historical perspective here, we were involved in creating this. I-69 International Trade Corps, you've probably heard about it, city is an official partner, been a partner for eight or 10 years, so is the township. We actually have an established authority, it's kind of cut off down here, a local development financing authority, which is more of a, I'll call it more of an industrial TIF, that has been established. This is an authority that essentially runs on Lansing Road, it doesn't go all the way to the corner, I think it's closer to like Family Dollar, runs all the way down to Britton Road, down to Bed Park, the industrial park, and then down, or excuse me, Lansing Road, then at Britton. And so that includes city taxes, city property, then includes township, it's a joint deal. And so when we established that district, everybody stayed in, the one I believe that did opt out was the library. So, you know, as Justin said, we'd have to go through that process again, we'd have to educate all of the jurisdictions. Obviously, I think we had support for that, because, you know, there's a lot of land, as you know, the city has a lot of land on Lansing Road that can be developed, and so that is a tool to help that type of development. So just a little historical perspective, we've done this before, it's been quite a few years, and there was pretty good support.
I ask another question, I was off of that. What would be the benefit of the county not wanting those taxes to continue and opting out, continuing to take those taxes?
Well, the benefit there would be for the county to continue to capture those funds to help support their programming.
I mean, that's why they would wanna opt out.
That's why they would wanna opt out.
But why wouldn't they wanna opt out?
In some instances, because they know growth within the district, growth within the community, is still going to impact growth within the county. And so any new growth that is here will help to support that. So for example, I'm looking at the city of Langsberg plan right now, and their city capture is 15 mills, the total capture is 25 mills, and so 10 or so mills are not going to the city currently, or prior, if the DDA wasn't there. That included county operating at 5.5, seniors at .4, medical care at 1.9, MSU extension, veterans PA 214, veterans voted, library and fire. So...
And so all those groups stayed in the...
They opted in, yep. Yeah, but for Langsberg, this was an, this is a updated development plan, and so they weren't, they were amending the plan, they weren't creating new. So, but that's one of the things that, when we talk about the boundaries, and saying it's easier to start larger and contract if needed, versus starting small and expand. Like I said, anytime you create a new authority, you get those taxing jurisdictions an opportunity to opt out, and in certain communities, they've kept their DDA small, but then have gone and created that local development finance authority that Justin spoke to, or created a corridor commercial improvement authority for their freeway exchange area, and every time you do that, you're going back to those taxing jurisdictions and asking them to opt in. So at the point, if the DDA is really the true focus of what you're trying to accomplish, every time you go and ask those taxing jurisdictions to give up a little more, the more likely it probably is that they might wanna opt out. So I always think it's just a little bit better to maybe look at the opportunity of a bigger district to start, make contract if needed.
Why are they giving up more?
Because it's another capture authority. So if you have three capture authorities in the city...
So the city would be losing out, or the person that you're asking in that district?
No, the county. Every time you go to a county or a taxing jurisdiction with a new capture authority, you're asking them to give up a portion of their capture for the creation.
Okay, I was just confused, okay, I mixed it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Can you have more than one, like, TIPA? If we had a DDA for the downtown development authority, done in the downtown area, and we did a corridor improvement authority for the business section out there, would that solve the problem of having to create the T of running everything down Main Street? Would it collect the same amount of taxes?
They would, yes. It would be essentially the same, it would be two different authorities.
Correct.
So you'd have two different...
But it would do the same thing, it would get, the corridor improvement authority would collect the money and improvements out there for that area, and the DDA would collect the money for the area in the downtown area.
Correct.
Problem solved, we wouldn't have to get rid of all the residential?
Yeah. It does get complicated with layers, and once again, there is some precedent on this, with the one on Lansing Road, there's an existing township DDA that has a significant amount. Now, in that case, the township was only collecting a very small percentage on their own DDA, and this overlay district actually allowed the creation of additional taxes. And what's interesting, it's not really expandable for downtowns here, but what's interesting is the I-69 one that I referenced to you actually gets school taxes, which is a huge revenue source, but that's because of the state law that allows it, and what happens, because we had to go in front of the Perry School Board for this, the Chucks Group, the state economic development folks, they actually reimburse the schools. So it's available, depending on the tool, you can mix and match and, yeah.
Right, well, now with the new act, and the way things have changed, like you said, the school tax isn't available.
Yeah.
Other than Brownfield, Brownfield Act 381 still allows capture of school.
Yeah. And now that one, you actually don't need to create an authority, we actually have a county Brownfield authority that we could work through for that, but Brownfield's different, because you have to have certain conditions associated with the property to qualify, things like contamination of property.
Most important, I would say, is to, and if you're thinking about a district, thinking about where you want it to be and how, how to do it, is to virtually create the district, and then look at the assessed value for that district, and start to run the capture numbers. If the sole intent is to repurpose downtown, there would be no problem with running the district out there, or there would be no problem with having a separate authority for that out there. Like I said, I've seen communities do a full plan.
How would you begin to estimate what the capture would be? Would you take the taxable value, the change in the taxable value from like, say, 19 to 20, and then project it out to 21?
We have a table that we use, where we look at the baseline value for the district and calculate the mills. So the base year is the number that we use, so for example, in Langsberg, their initial value, when they created the TIP, the DDA, in 1989, I believe it was, was around 1.59. Today, its base value is 3.89, and so that's the number that we used for the development plan, and then projected that out 20 years with 2% growth.
Oh, 2%. Okay, I just wanted what you...
Yeah.
We're projecting for growth per year.
Yeah, and that gave us a total of what we could expect total capture to be at the end of 20 years, which is around 6.89. Then we broke that down by the village multiplier to show how each individual taxing jurisdiction would be impacted by that capture, and so for example, let's see, general operating for the county over the 20 years, we projected at about $223,000 that they were opting out of over that 20-year period.
Okay, I have another question. How does the heavy override affect us? We are affected by the... by the headly override. We would project thirteen point five seven eight two mil, and then the headly override comes in and says, okay, you've had this much increase in your taxable value, we're going to make you reduce your millage this amount. Is that what the DDA collects, or do they still continue to collect the original thirteen point five seven eight two? Or does the headly affect the amount they collect also?
They capture the millages that are available to be captured at any given time.
Okay. So it's not anything that's in stone, that's what they're going to...
Right, right.
Okay. So that's flexible, too?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just one more.
Well, basically, almost any of the questions, I'll hang up. Is there a way that we could get those numbers before having to have an extensive amount of costs for the city in setting this up?
Yeah. So you could, you could identify, because ultimately, what we need to do is basically draw a map. If I go back to this slide for the five or two map, you would draw your map, and then every parcel that's within sight of that map, cap, look at the assessed value for those parcels, total it all up, so you have one number for the entire district and all those properties in there. Then you can start to project out the revenues beyond that, and see what it would look like over the twenty years. Some companies that I've worked with in the past are extremely liberal with their projections, and will project three or four percent growth over the term. We like to be fairly conservative with our projections, only until the last year or so did we start even projecting out a two percent. Generally, we'd like to project out at one percent or one and a half percent growth, because if you can accomplish four percent growth across your district for twenty years, you're doing something out of this world amazing, you know? So we like to look at a couple of different scenarios there, and then see what those projections might look like. But yes, you can do that before you establish. Really, all you have to do is determine what that boundary looks like, and then capture the full assessed value, or the total assessable value for that district.
Can I jump in here just a minute and ask Bob? Bob, is that something that you, your planning commission has done? Have you done that to the point where you could bring that to the council and say, these are the numbers?
Yes. Well, we've defined the district, but it goes up fifty-two and takes in out there.
Right. But have you looked at the taxable values and so on? You haven't done that part. Is that something you could do, or would you need their company to do that?
Yeah. I mean, that's a good...
If I have a parcel list, I can get the taxable value.
You can get the taxable value?
If I have a parcel list, we can get the taxable value. And then we have, we have maps in City Hall that have, that looks just like that. One map has got addresses, one map has got parcel numbers.
Okay. Well, then I could work with you to put something together like this, so you can see where we have, broke out by each jurisdiction, and that will, that will give us a good projection.
Mine actually, mine actually has a historical taxable value that's nineteen eighty-six.
And what would the cost be to the city for that portion of the work?
Just that piece? I would have to go back, because our contract with you currently is basically time on materials.
Right.
So we have a billing rate that we've agreed upon. I would just need to go back in and figure out what the hours would be for that. It's hard for me to say right on the spot what the cost would be for a new DDA, tax increment finance plan, and development plan, and assistance with helping taxing jurisdictions opt in. Probably be somewhere twelve, five, fifteen thousand. But...
Yes, to do what this is happening, what would be the hours that would take between you working with Joe?
I can, I can figure that out and let the city know. My guess would be...
Do you want to just forward me that blank Excel sheet? I can put the numbers in.
Well, at this point, we're still, the council needs to decide, maybe not tonight, I don't know if you're ready. But the question before the council is, are we in support of the planning commission pursuing application for a DDA? That's the question before the council. That's the reason for these gentlemen being here. That's the object that we need to determine. Because if...
Our question, if we do all this work, and spend all this money, and do all this stuff, and we send it to the state for approval, and the state says, no, you guys don't qualify for a DDA, then what?
They won't. There's no, there's no, it's in statute.
There's no approval that's required by the state?
No. No. The statute is in place, so you would still forward the state your approved ordinance of creation, and there are annual reports to share with Treasury, but there is, the state would not have the final approval of the creation. That rests with council.
The creation actually happens within the municipality, and the definition of the DDA, then, according to all the things we've just talked about, the boundaries, the taxes that will be captured, the percentages, the ins and outs, that's all determined here with the planning commission, the DDA board, if you will. But it's then submitted to the state, I don't know the name of the authority, but it's just...
Department of Treasury, yeah.
Submitted to them, so they know. They look it over, and they might say, oh, but you didn't do this, we need you to do this, create this, you didn't do that. So they might send it back, and then we have to fix it up. But as far as, yeah, as far as approval, it's only based on all the information they need in order to have it on their file. Is that correct?
Exactly. Mayor, what I cast out here, this is actually a form from Chuck, and I don't know if Chuck's on, I know we've had some technology issues tonight, but I do think, I wanted to jump in here because you're talking about if you want to go down the path. Obviously, Justin, what you talked about a lot tonight was, you know, what's available at the local community level, but what doors can be opened at higher levels by having either DDA or having a vision or a plan for your community. So this is a nice little one pager. For those who are on the state website, you might have actually already looked at this.
We do have all of this from that website, and that page is in here.
Good. Yeah. And so, and you see here, and we don't need to obviously go through it, but, you know, and Chuck is really the key driver here, but you see, they are looking to fund projects, and there's little bullet points. I mentioned a couple of them last time on Zoom call, some of the incentives that are there. They're obviously looking at a downtown, right, area, to your point, Joanne, downtown, which is sort of that historical, or they will support high-impact corridors, so some of those other districts. But as you see on the back, you know, they're looking for, when they consider these support, you know, looking for things like vision and goals stated in the master plan, downtown plan, capital improvements plan, economic development strategy, and there's a whole bunch of stuff here. But, you know, even if you didn't hypothetically do the tax thing, you don't have to do, obviously, the tax increment finance plan. Simply putting together the development plan and having a vision could potentially then open doors for some of these state programs as well. I don't, Justin, can you speak? Do all of your communities have TIF? Do some only have a plan and not TIF? How do you see that going?
The predominant amount of communities that I work in all have some form of taxing jurisdiction.
Charles is trying to speak.
Oh, good.
And so I'm trying to be polite, but trying to let you know that he's...
No, that's good. He's the guy that put this together, so, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you so much. And I think, yes, it's key to note that, you know, a DDA is not a requirement to get our incentives. But what it does do is you've got a dedicated body, you know, that's focused on economic development in your downtown, you know? And for me, that's really the key, because we're really here to kind of assist in implementing your vision. And then, as Justin mentioned, we used all those tools that are on that sheet. That was it.
Thank you.
Can I dab up a little bit? I'm not sure I understand. Special millages, like for senior, and nine-one-one and things like that, they lose some money to?
Yes, those millages are available for capture.
And they don't get to opt out if they want to?
No, they do. Any taxing jurisdiction has the ability to opt out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so the state doesn't even check the boundaries that are set up?
They would. You would submit your final ordinance for creation and the development of the DDA to the state, along with your development plan and your tax increment finance plan. So that is kept on record. And then you do have yearly reports that you do submit to Treasury based on the finances and the expenditures that have happened that year. So both the collection of tax increment finance, as well as the expenditure.
And I would add that, as, yeah, as the mayor mentioned, basically, it's all locally adopted. And there is a process where, again, council adopts this, but there is no necessarily DDA police. And so what you do, if you don't do it right, is you kind of have legal liability. So you do want to make sure that you're doing the plan accordingly, and that it's legally defensible.
Thank you.
I think...
I have one more question.
Okay. We're at the end here, though.
I know.
Thank you. Quick.
Well, if you can't stop talking, I will. Justin, I'm into the fee that you said, I know it was a testament, but does that give, you drop the, a boundary for us, submit any paperwork, all that stuff, right?
Start to finish. We work with you to help create the ordinance, create the resolutions, develop the plan, all of the notifications that would need to be prepared for public hearings.
Okay.
That's all in cases.
Okay.
But then you stay available.
Correct.
I mean, it's not that they do that and then they head to the Bahamas.
No, no.
They're nearly to the, to the DDA board or planning commission in our case.
Right, right. Right now, we're under an enthusiastic contract with the city. We haven't done a lot of work, and we've done quite a bit in the past year, but, you know, we're here when you need us, you call us. We've already established those billing rates with you. And, but for projects like this, I don't want to, if we're going to do the full creation of the plan and adoption of the ordinance and create the DDA, I wouldn't want to do that on a time and materials basis. I would give you an actual cost proposal, maximum not to exceed, that you would approve as a council.
So that was my question, because I think it was getting confused of you being contracted with us and doing this project, because I think Sue was in, correct me if I'm wrong, is just the initial, kind of putting the numbers on the table.
Yeah.
What cost would that be, along with, I mean, it was a good, it was a good thing to know what it would be, because we've already seen a rough, I mean, you're in the ballpark of what happened with the first one two years ago, three years ago. So, I mean, the numbers that you bring to actually develop it is in the ballpark. But I think what was in question with the contract of, is council, is that what you were saying, Sue? Are you comfortable just even the initial work, because we would be using our city contract to develop that chart that he'd be working with Joanne? Is that, was that what you were asking?
And I would still give you a cost estimate not to exceed. So even though under that contract with the current rates, I would give you a letter or an email or whatever you would need that says, you know, for the purposes of creating these tax increment projections, you know, we would, we would do it in eight hours or less, or a fee not to exceed, you know, a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, whatever that time would be.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay. That's what I thought. That's why I thought we were getting two kind of subjects.
Yep. We can do that. So I just need to put the hours in and see how...
I get the feeling from the council that they would like to know how much they're going to get for their buck.
Sure.
A better idea than what they know now, which is nothing.
Sure.
So if they can invest less than two thousand dollars and find out those numbers.
Sure.
I think they would be much more comfortable with making a decision whether to go ahead with fifteen thousand dollars.
Sure, sure.
To put this all together, or at that point to say, we can do just as much without a DDA. I don't know.
No, I, I...
I think they need those numbers, and I think, once we have those numbers, it might be good to have some time other than during council meetings, a workshop, say, maybe two hours on whatever day, Saturday, to go over those numbers, to make sure that other questions that are going to come up in the meanwhile would have time to be answered and understood.
Yep.
So that we are doing due diligence before we spend the community's money. Is that comment from the council? Anyone?
Yeah.
I agree with you. Exactly.
So I will work then to put together a quick hourly cost for just that portion, and get that to you here soon.
That'd be great. So we could, once you get that to us, we can relay, yes, do that. And council, do you want to bring in a motion that says if it's under a certain dollar amount to have them go ahead, or do you want it to come to the next council meeting in two weeks to discuss it again, and then go?
How long, Justin, do you think it's going to take for you to get that put together?
I could probably have that estimate to the city by early next week.
You'll just do it the next meeting?
I'd just get it with a chance to look at it.
I don't know what the verbiage is, but let's do that at the next meeting. Is that fine?
Table at the next meeting.
Table.
Yeah. If you CC me on it, then I'll work it, remind me for the agenda to get what she's trying to accomplish. Is that okay?
Yep.
Bob, have we answered any questions that you had for the council to...
Well, yeah, I was, I was wrong on the dates that I said, because I said it had to be done by the end of March. It's the fourth Monday in May.
Oh, okay. Well, that's better.
For this year.
If you want to do it this year, but I'm predicting to do it for 2022. I don't think we could put it together now in May.
Yeah.
Not with public hearings and other things. You would really want to use this year to spend the time, put in the work to create the development plan, create the vision, and adopt it before the end of this year, so that way you can get the first capture of the next year.
Okay. So we will table this discussion to further, in the future, at the next meeting, to go over the numbers that they're going to put together for us, and maybe, maybe be able to address the question at hand, and that is, does the council support the application?
Justin, is there a possibility of getting a plan for, or their development plans for...
It's not fully adopted yet.
Okay.
They're working on it right now. We're finishing it up for the plan amendment, but I can send you, if you email me, I can send you some examples of projects or plans that we put together.
Okay.
We just finished up the one from Murray County Township as well, so I'd be happy to share that. We've got a number of examples.
Is Charles gone? Have we told him goodbye?
No, I'm still here.
You still there?
Busy.
Yep.
Charles?
Yes.
We'd like to thank you for your time tonight and for sharing with us. We're going to get some more information from Justin, and then meet again in two weeks.
That sounds great. If you need anything from me, please feel free to reach out.
Will do. Thanks. Have a good night.
Yep.
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, so what I put is expense approval for CIB to show DDA tax capture estimate under agenda item for next meeting.
That sounds good. Thank you, David. Do we have any comments from the public? I haven't seen, yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. Just a couple of other items. We finally got the grant application done for the water project. I want to give credit, actually, to my vice president, Brett Jones, who some of you know, he really did all the legwork. But thank you, Mayor Sue, thank you, John. You've been very helpful, obviously, working with the township, supervisor for folks, treasurer Troy Carmely. We, I hate to say, killed quite a few trees with this thing. There's a ton of attachments, but it's a good application, good numbers. I am proud to report, we were able to secure support letters from several different property owners slash businesses. One of them is actually already in the city, are going to be building in the city, Matemo Foods, as you guys know, they're going to definitely benefit, you know, they, with water. Most of the others in the township. So I think we have a pretty compelling application. So now, that will go... So now that will go in. I know we've got to sign some paperwork. That will go in and we will wait to hear back from the federal EDA and then we'll go from there. So I don't think it's going to take months. I think it's going to be a matter of weeks, hopefully, and we'll be back, we'll get in touch with Sue on that. The last item I had, I had an inquiry about two hours ago about the clerk, deputy clerk treasurer position the city had posted, whether or not that was still open. So I wanted to ask if that was.
It is not.
It is not? Okay. Perfect.
Praise God.
Okay. All right. I had somebody say, hey, is this still open? I said, I don't know. I'm going to the council meeting later. I'll find out. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving ahead, next on our agenda, let me find my place here, is mayor and department head reports.
For communications.
Oh, communications. I skipped over to Devin. I'm sorry. Devin, could you share your communications with us, please?
Okay, just briefly, it's more to make sure council has it in their agenda packet. You receive some city attorney advice. It's regarding an ambulance special assessment. Ours is expired, and he explains what would follow if council should consider to do a new special ambulance assessment. The next item that I wanted to communicate to make sure that you all seen the copy and have a copy of the Senate Bill Number 241. It's in regard to legislation stating about no, or not shutting water service off to occupied residents. And again, these two items are both on the agenda later. And then also, I just want to make sure that everybody received the DDA packet. This information was shared by Mr. Elliott, and hopefully you all received that. And that is all I have for correspondence.
Thank you very much. Mayor and department head reports. I'll just take a minute, because Justin did bring that up. We have interviewed for the part-time treasurer slash clerk deputy position, and we have tentatively chosen a candidate to fill that position based on the testing that needs to be done. So, once we've completed that process, we'll have that person attend a council meeting and you can meet her and so forth and so on. I'll hold back on the name until we get all the testing completed. But I just, we'll now move to the department heads for their reports. Who wants to go first?
Kyle.
Kyle.
Kyle doesn't know that.
Kyle didn't know that?
Kyle doesn't have a report. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Everything running smoothly?
Everything is running smoothly. We did get finally a charger for our TASER batteries. We got two batteries that are interchangeable, but without a charger, they both were dead. And so we did the training, and we're not able to get the final certification of shooting those up. So the ladies got to see.
Very excited.
The TASER utilized today on the static target.
We have a green Spider-Man under the hallway there.
Yes, we do.
I have to look twice every time I see it. It's like, what?
So that's moving along. Everything else is business as usual, I guess.
That's good.
We're fortunate. I'm very grateful to be in the community we're in.
We're grateful you're here.
Thank you.
Actually.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. How's the whole thing going with the speed limit and dealing with drivers driving access through town?
We, I've seen a lot of dedicated time on Main Street and a lot of traffic stops.
People wearing?
We're not necessarily writing tickets for speed, though we are actually writing quite a few tickets for other things. Expired license, expired registration, suspensions, no insurance is still a big thing, as it was last year and 10 years ago, and so on. So, yeah, seems to be a lot of concentrated patrol in the street.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Joanne, do you have anything to tell us?
No, I don't have any report either, but seeing how Kyle got up here, I guess I could have.
Well, I'm glad you were here tonight to answer the last question.
Oh, yeah, it was very informational.
Thank you.
I have a packet to go and look through. Just, things are going well. The girls at City Hall have been most helpful and patient. We have been collecting property taxes. The due date without penalty is the February 14th, which is like five weeks. We'll collect taxes here in City Hall up until March 1st with penalties, and then my books get closed and they go over to the county. Dog licenses will be available at City Hall until the 1st of March, or February 28th is the last day. So, other than that, things are going along smoothly. So, any questions?
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your questions.
Pardon?
Your questions tonight weren't going to talk to.
I had one more. That was, Mr. Bocky is here. I can ask it. Is there something in the documentation, or is that part of the development plan of how soon you have to spend the money? So that you, so it's not like you collect, 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 and then come up with projects to spend it? Are the projects set up beforehand?
There, as a general rule, I mean, you don't go specifics until you get the money. As an example, you want to improve the facade on all the buildings downtown. Until you get what you can, you know, with grants and so on and so forth, there is no time limit on spending the money. The only time limit on spending the money is if the DDA is dissolved.
Oh, got it. Sure. Sure. All right. Thank you. That was my question.
John?
So, this is just a little recap of last year. Public Works did a little over 275 missed dig, low quake requests, and that's a pretty fair amount, and we have roughly 770-some services. In 2020, from the numbers that I got from the utility clerk, we did seven new utility connections, either a combination of water sewer or just water. Currently, we got five homes in process or in progress. They just dug another footing or foundation and poured the footings yesterday in Country Estates. So I think there's five out there in some stage. Last week, I submitted a drinking water asset management grant for funds for a service line inventory that has to be done by 2025, some work to the Vactor truck, and an update to our current asset management plan that is required by Eagle, and funds for us to go out and labor and whatnot to locate and pothole service lines that we don't know what the material is. That's kind of pretty much where I'm at right now. We had enjoyable snow plowing over the holidays.
We do have on our agenda possible approval of the water tower maintenance, so if you could hang around until we get to that in case they have a question.
Is there any?
Any questions for John now? Devin, do you have anything to report?
No.
Any other committee reports from any council? So now we have presentation and approval of the bills. Maybe have a chance to review those.
Did you do I have three signatures, Neil?
Okay.
I think I only approved the bills presented that David deauthorized.
Thank you, Larry. Craig, did you?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the bills presented and paying the same, if all I?
I.
Oppose? Okay, good. Thank you. So, I think now we move on to the new business first item, possible approval of water tower maintenance. There's a big old report in your packet.
The Dixon engineer? Yes.
John, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yep. So, basically, this, I need to do this before January 31st. It's a letter of intent to apply for the state revolving loan drinking water. They've put money aside every year, and the water tower has been on my radar where, as you, if you looked at any of the report, 1999, the tower was painted. I don't know if this has any, it does have some pictures, so you could see the condition of paint peeling off the top. We got about a year or two, you know, most of these paint jobs are, say, a 15-ish year life. We're going to be 22 years into this, roughly. And so I'm just asking council, before we get into budget, because this is going to be 2022's work, and I'll put it in 2021 fiscal year, July of next year, or, well, the current year to July 2022. If it extends, I mean, that's what it is, what we have to, I need to have support to go ahead and proceed with a letter of intent, the final application, and I'll have to work with Joanne more extensively, would be, I believe, in June, the end of June, would be, when that has to be turned in.
Any questions?
Yes.
I had a question, John. Looking through the report, there are some things that I was deferring that needed to be done sooner rather than later. Are there some things in that report that need to look at before 2022?
Okay, so this is what has to happen, the things in the beginning that are needed now. In my discussion with our DEQ or Eagle engineer, two weeks, three weeks ago, I told him that this was my intentions, and if I could get a package together, that we would do everything with a water tower, repainting interior, exterior. The thing, this is the reason why I want to do it at one time. If I, it's going to be down for roughly 45. I hope not much more than that, but I'm anticipating two months. It's going to be a lot of sleepless nights for me, because there's no reserve water, and if it goes like the week that I had the tower down for the inspection, I'm going to be here a lot. So, there are situations where Lane, that put in our water treatment plant, they have an 8,000 gallon tanker that they can help us run on pressure, and I'll have a little reserve. So I'm looking at putting a little bit of money in, because I have to redo the plant somewhat piping, because the last time in 99, the system was a totally different, and it was not set up to do what I have to do this time. So, for two months, I'm going to be running without the iron removal plant if I do it that way, because eventually the vessels, I won't be able to backwash them. So I'm getting some estimates on that end, and then that'll give me time. So I'm looking at like around a $400,000 bond or loan. Now, it's a little fat now today, but I don't know what's going to be in 2022. The Dixon engineer told me that the 350, to budget 350 for just the tower could be, but I need a little extra to do some other things to make sure that this goes off without a hitch. If I answer. So Eagle will let us postpone the things right now to be put with this. Okay. They want that to happen.
That was really my, you just answered my question.
And if we don't make a commitment to fix the, or paint the tower, then I have to, I just have to do these this spring.
Okay.
So these things can wait till 2022, all of these things, if we're ready to go?
They will wait if I have a commitment to do it. If we don't, I got to get it done. There's certain, certain things that are required.
Was that your question, Craig?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for John? What we're really looking for is support from the council for him to go ahead and make the application for this grant. Or loan, I should say.
Yeah, this is a loan.
It's a loan.
It's one, for a 20-year loan, it's 1.875%. At $400,000 for 20 years, it's going to be roughly $2,000 a month payment.
I move that we support the superintendent of DFW to move forward by submitting application of intent for possible funding through state revolving funds in regard to water towers need for repairs.
Second.
Then moved and seconded as read that we support this application and all those in favor. I?
I.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, John.
Okay.
Get busy.
Okay. One other thing, I am applying for disadvantaged community along with this, so this will be ahead of the loan with the intent to apply, and they will let us know if we have any loan forgiveness.
Through the state?
Through the state. This is state of Michigan.
Great, thank you. We do have just a brief discussion regarding water shut offs. John brought to us information last month about the numbers, the high numbers of people who were in arrears on their water bills. Shirley and Dory and Devin and Joe all took this to heart, and they went through the records, and Shirley has diligently been calling people, being very careful in what she says, because as you can see in this Senate Bill Number 241 in your packet, that water shut off is not allowed. The thing is, at the very end of this, if you read it all, Section 6 says this act is repealed effective March 31st, 2021. Not that we want to shut people's water off, we don't. We just need money. We need payment so we can continue to provide good water. So Shirley has made a lot of calls, and she provided me with this list. This many people are in arrears, and probably half of the people on this list are chronically in arrears, not just since the pandemic started, but always. She did get several people who had quite high bills, $900 even, who stepped up and paid when she called. So that's great. There's been gift of water through that program that has been applied to three or four accounts. She didn't have that exact number. So there's been people who have made arrangements and are making regular payments every couple weeks or every paycheck or once a month, that type of thing. So, I asked her what would be helpful to her. She said, well, several people don't answer their phone. When she calls and she tries to call several times, they just don't answer the phone. She would like to see us use a door hanger, but change the verbiage on it. Right now, it says, your water service will be disconnected if payment's not received. Well, we can't do that. So we would change the verbiage here to something along the line of, your water service payment is delinquent. Contact City Hall to make payment arrangements. So if they're not going to answer the phone to hear us say it, they need to get it somehow. I said, well, why don't we mail them a letter? She said, a lot of them won't open it. But if there's this big yellow tag hanging on their door, they don't want the neighbors to see it, so they'll take it in the house and accidentally see what it's about. So, what discussion can we have concerning the next step? Anybody got any ideas?
That's something we'd have to reprint.
Yeah, somehow.
Or we could put a label over.
Put a label over that?
Put a label over that?
What, what is currently there?
Wrap label over the top of it to get that nice contrast there.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Maybe neon orange and, you know, certainly other steps and, and just on a regular basis because Shirley said the people that I get hold of on the phone and get a chance to talk to will usually send some money in, maybe not the whole bill, but at least they'll, you know, communicate with us. So we need to keep communication open and it's kind of hard for some people in this day and age to do that. There's no newspaper here in town. But I, I think this is probably a good first step. We can certainly have Dory move ahead to prepare the letters that will go out to people who are still in arrears so that if their water bill is still in arrears when property taxes get sent, assuming they're also in arrears on their taxes, that that bill gets attached to their taxes and gets sent to the county. So a letter goes out explaining that process. Again, doesn't say anything about shutting water off. That's not the intent. We don't want to shut water off. We want people to have the good water they have available, but it's not free. Then we're going to be past March 31st. And if we have to play hardball at that point, that's what we have to do.
I hope it's not extended again.
Yeah. And there's a process, you know, there would be letters, there would be door hangers at that point saying, payment arrangements must be made or your water will be shut off such and such a date.
I think the door hanger will add a fight is a good next step.
So we'll get this back to Shirley and she can work on stickers or whatever needs to happen there.
Yeah. Paint them bright yellow so they know what they are.
So we've already had our discussion about DDA. We are to the point of the discussion regarding A-frame signs.
Can I step back just so I know how to follow it?
Sure.
So the discussion to create DDA, is that something that's going to go on the next agenda? We put no action taken?
Yes, please, yep.
And then the next one?
The possible workshop for DDA?
Mm-hmm.
That's, both of those would go with that report that we're going to get at the next meeting.
So is council okay that those both agenda items go to no action taken to the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, continue.
No, that's okay, don't get any time. Discussion of A-frame signs. Devon was just kind of bringing me up to speed on certain things that need attention at some point. And the A-frame signs moratorium came up and that moratorium was placed in 2018?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a long time for a moratorium. I think we need to talk about what to do with that, you know? Are we going to create a new ordinance, amend an ordinance? Keep the moratorium active until that ordinance is created? Or are we going to dissolve the moratorium and go back to what was on the books before? So let's discuss that.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we take that ordinance off the books and you're completely out of our ordinance.
I have a question on that before we vote on your.
Well, yeah, you can, that's what we're supposed to do discussion next. So I'm making a motion to make it was second.
I, I don't know what you're saying.
What?
I want to take that completely out of our ordinance. I want a motion to get rid of the A-frame ordinance completely out of our.
Can't do that. That's an ordinance amendment.
An ordinance amendment?
Well, yeah, because it is an ord, it is, the A-frame signs is part of our ordinance. There was a moratorium put on with no expiration date is what's on here. And I did give you a typo, I put resolve instead of dissolve. So you have two motions in front of you. One is dissolving the moratorium, which would, which.
Put it back in the back.
Which put, would put it as it currently states. And the next one would actually support the moratorium as you, as your finance and ordinance committee would consider working on amendment, which could be possibly taking that out or whatever. That's what the second motion is a suggestion for you to do.
I, I make a motion that we send this to the finance and what committee?
Ordinance.
Ordinance committee in order to look at this with the possibility of taking it out completely from the ordinance.
And leaving the moratorium in place until then occurs, correct?
Correct.
Bob, did you have something?
I just wanted a Reader's Digest version of why there's moratorium on it.
The, the ordinance that was in place was very difficult to enforce. The downtown business owners, well, not just downtown, but the business owners who were using the A-frame signs on a regular basis and suddenly started getting letters telling them they were in violation of the signed ordinance, didn't like that very much. And it was just a lot of.
I had a little bit to that.
Yes.
There were some complaints over certain businesses that used A-frame signs and the people, it was put out forward by several city councils to enforce the sign ordinance. And so the previous mayor did that. But as the person who was involved with that went downtown, they found there were several violations of it. And so they handed them out equally to everyone who was in violation. And that created a big stir because it was multiple businesses that came in and complained to the city council at that time. And so that's why they put a moratorium on it.
Yeah, they went through a process to trying to have permit, sign permits applied for, for A-frame sign.
Yeah.
It was, and it's, I think everybody finally just said, let's just not do anything.
Yeah.
And so they put a moratorium on it and it's been in place since.
Which for two, three year, almost three years.
Yeah.
Two.
It's the first time I've ever seen a moratorium with no end date.
Yeah. If I could say, Devon, tell me if I'm wrong, but in the ordinance, it's supposed to be that they are to apply for a permit to have an A-frame sign. They can have them, but it's supposed to be a permit basis in order to.
Yes.
Get approval, but that was not happening and that's when all this was being enforced.
Yes, so, so the only thing you left out was, is that mayor was told to proceed with, and do it all out. And then it backfired and council was like, don't, don't do that.
Yeah.
So the mayor's like, if you don't want me doing my job, you might as well do a moratorium then and it, it just will take it off the books for a bit.
I'd like to ask that.
Yeah, thank you.
You also, Bob? I'd like to ask Craig if you would accept an amendment to your motion that would refer it to the finance and ordinance committee without necessarily stipulating that the objective would be to get rid of it, but instead evaluate what should or shouldn't be in that ordinance, possibly by reviewing sign ordinances in other communities of our size and then come forward with council with a recommendation in terms of next steps and in the interim, the moratorium would remain in place.
Can I make it simple and the same?
Yes.
That we support moratorium created October 4th, 2018, which stops current enforcement of A-frame signs until finance and ordinance committee meets and makes a recommendation to council to possibly amend zoning ordinance section 1314(c)(3), which is addressing the A-frame signs. That we are not committing to action, you're just working on it.
That was my point.
I want to add one more thing, that upon that being submitted to city council, city council must vote to either end the moratorium, or to end the moratorium or to enforce the signs or whatever is the suggestion. So that we have an end date to the moratorium.
Well, that's pointing what it says until.
How does it end?
That's what it's talking about.
Fair enough.
That you support the moratorium because you want the moratorium in place because you don't necessarily agree with what it is in. So you're supporting the moratorium until the finance and ordinance committee meets and makes a recommendation to council to possibly amend zoning ordinance.
Very good.
So that's ending your moratoriums. One is supporting the other. You're keeping one in action to do work.
Good.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, second it.
Any discussion on that because it was a little perhaps confusing, perhaps not? All those in favor of the motion as understood?
I'm only in motion.
Again, can't vote by say, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. So we'll move that on to the finance and ordinance committee. That's probably why Adam didn't come because he's the chairman.
He's got two of the three people here.
Good.
Sounds funny.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the possible first reading of an ordinance amendment and that number is 351. The first time we have an ordinance amendment in front of council for consideration, the whole thing has to be that. So I called Larry, said, Larry, would you help me read that? So why don't you go ahead and start?
Okay, yeah. I move that the water and sewer treatment amendment number 3351 regarding.
Is that 351?
Yeah.
It should be 351, correct.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Regarding cleanup and clarification updates and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city perie ordains current city code section 1040 dot 02 is amended with the addition of the following paragraphs. E, employees of the city shall have the right to enter any premises in which or on which city water is used to inspect, repair, or remove water meters or apparatus in connection with water meters at any and all reasonable times. F, it shall be unlawful for any person to open any valve or make any connection which will make possible the use of water which is not passed through the water meter properly installed by the city. Current city code section 1040 dot 03 is hereby repealed. The following cited code section 1040 03 is submitted in its place instead. 1040 03, free service prohibited billing utility rates and charges scheduled. No free service shall be furnished by the water city, or system, excuse me, to the city, to any person, public or private, or to any public, excuse me, agency or instrumentality. Charges for service, excuse me, charges for service furnished by the system shall be billed and collected as established by the current schedule of utility rates and as established by the city council and amended from time to time by the city council. Current city code section 1040 dot 06 is hereby repealed. The below cited city code section 1040 06 is submitted in its place instead. 1040 06, charges for service in city. A, monthly base charge, all premises in the city shall be subject to monthly base charge according to the size of the water meter and service connected to the premises in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges. B, commodity charge, in addition to the monthly base charge, all premises in the city connected to the system shall pay a commodity charge for the amount of water used at the rate established in the city schedule of utility charges. C, connection charge, a connection charge will be charged to each premises in the city connected to the city water system. This charge will be the sum of the following. One, the actual cost of all labor and material and any other expenses required to provide the necessary service up to and including curb, box, and valve. Two, the actual cost of all labor and material required to provide the necessary metering equipment. And three, an administrative fee of 30% of both paragraphs C1 and 2 hereof. And the connection, excuse me, if the connection is constructed and paid for directly by the property owner, the city shall waive the connection charge except for the actual cost incurred by the city of inspecting such connection. All construction shall be in accordance with city specifications. D, benefit charge, in addition to the connection charge, a benefit charge in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges as established by the city council shall be charged for each single family residential equivalent in the city connecting to the system after the effective date of this section. The single family residential equivalency shall be determined from the table of unit factors set forth in section 1040 dot 08. Such tables shall set forth and identify the type of premises and all applicable factors to be multiplied by the benefit charge for a single family residential premises. Such table will be modified or amended from time to time by resolution of the council. Rules for interpreting the table of unit factors are as follows. Four, the minimum equivalent factor for users shall be 1.0. Five, equivalent units for users not originally contained in such table may be added thereto from time to time by resolution of council. Six, where multiple businesses exist at one location, the various businesses shall be combined for determining the equivalent units at such location. Current city council section 1040 07 is repealed and being cited, and below, excuse, below cited section 1040 07 is submitted in its place instead. 1040 07, charges for service outside the city. A, monthly base charge, all premises outside the city shall be subject to monthly base charge in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges according to the size of the water meter and service connected to the premises. B, commodity charge, in addition to the monthly base charge, all premises outside the city connected to the system shall pay a commodity charge for the amount of water used at the rate as established by the city's schedule of utility charges. C, connection charge, a connection charge shall be charged to each premises outside the city connected to the city water system. This charge shall be the sum of the following. One, the actual cost of all labor and material and any, and any other expenses required to provide the necessary service up to and including the curb, box, and valve. Two, the actual cost of all labor and material required to provide the necessary metering equipment. And three, an administrative fee of 30% of both paragraphs C1 and 2 hereof. If the connection is constructed and paid for directly by the property owner, the city shall waive the connection charge except for the actual cost incurred by the city of inspecting such connection. All constructions shall be in accordance with the city specifications. D, benefit charge, in addition to the connection charge, a benefit charge in accordance with current schedule of utility rates and charges shall be charged for each single family residential equivalent outside the city connecting to the system after the effective date of this section. Current city code sections 1040 dot 09, 1040 dot 10, 1040 dot 11, 1040 dot 1115 are submitted in its place instead. 1040 09, turn on off charge, when the supply of water is shut off by the city for non-payment of water charges, a turn on charge in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges shall be made to restore service to the premises. When the supply of water is shut off by the city at the request of the water customer, a turn off on charge in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges will be made. 1040 10, security deposit, a cash deposit, deposit in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges, a security deposit from a user shall be required for each user. 1040 11, fire hydrant rental, for the use of water through fire hydrants and for the availability of such water, the city shall pay in equal quarterly installments, a sum in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges. Such payments shall be made from the funds legally available for such purposes or from the proceeds of taxes which the city levies within the charter tax rate limitations. 1040 dash 115, fire hydrant fee. A fire hydrant use fee shall be charged in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges for billing of swimming pools, tankers for grass turf, paving equipment, et cetera. Any fire department or emergency authority shall be exempt from the provisions of this section. Current city code section 1042 dot 12A and B are repealed and the below cited 1040 dot 12A and B are substituted in this, in its place instead. 1042 dot 12, charges for sewer service in the city. A, water users, the rate for a single family residential premises connected to the city water system shall be charged. 1042.12, charges for sewer service in the city. A. Water users. The rate for a single-family residential premises connected to the city water system shall be charged in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges. Two. The rate for any premises connected to the city water system other than a single-family residence shall be charged in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges for each single-family residential equivalency of the premises as determined by the table of unit factors as provided in subsection C hereof. Such tables shall set forth and identify the types of premises and all applicable factors to be multiplied by the rate for a single-family residential premises. Such tables shall be modified or amended from time to time by resolution of council. B. Non-water users. The rate for a single-family residential premises which is not connected to the city water system shall be charged in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges. Two. The rate for any premises which is not connected to the city water system other than a single-family residence shall be charged in accordance with the current schedule of utility rates and charges for each single-family residential equivalent based on the single-family residential equivalency of the premises as determined by the unit factors as provided in subsection C hereof. Such tables shall set forth and identify the types of premises and all applicable factors to be multiplied by the rate for a single-family residential premises. Such a table may be modified or amended from time to time by resolution of the council. Current city code, section 1040.08, is hereby repealed and below cited section 1040.08A is submitted, or excuse me, substituted in its place instead. 1042.08, conditions of service termination, billing, inspections. A. The city shall maintain at its expense the sewer main and line designated and presently installed for that property. The customer shall install and maintain at his or her expense that portion of the service, commencing with the line designated for his or her premises. These ordinance amendments shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication by roll call vote.
Good job.
Do we have our...
Yeah.
Good job.
Dick, I have, what's the purpose that this is coming and being done at this point in time? Do we, what brought this being, coming to...
It just needed to be done, you know, something that's been, being considered to update the ordinance and just kind of housekeeping, if you will. John, do you have anything to add?
Well, the fees have been taken out so that this doesn't have to be modified each time. It was a predominant, some of the wording in the beginning, it let us do certain things in sewer, but not in water, where we could, you know, not that we just like going in people's houses, I don't do that, but we have to go in from time to time to either fix the water meter, the parts, the things that the city owns inside, and that it gives us that provision there. So it was a combination that had started, I don't know...
Over a year ago.
Yeah.
So there's several aspects in each one.
It's just been dragging out, dragging out.
Gotcha.
Stuff in this.
So it's just updating it in order to make, simplify it and make it easier to...
Once the fees were out, it, that cleaned it up, so we didn't have to amend it each time, is that what?
Yes. Then we don't have to worry about errors, because whenever we do a resolution to increase the rates, when I get a hold of American Eagle, we don't do it by, the resolution allows that ordinance to be updated and put it in there, and so then you can have, you, you have a chance of human error.
Question, when there are fees in the ordinance as it exists today, where do those fees appear?
They're in the next resolution.
Yep, there's another resolution.
A portion of the resolution, the fees are there, but another portion, they're, they're not.
We already passed them.
Those have already been passed by prior resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there's a multiple, multiplying factor for each year, and then there are some parts of water, right, that has a five-year plan, which tells us exactly, tells us when to do it, January 1st of each year, and then your fee, our fee schedule, the clerk's office will make sure that those new rates are available into the water and sewer. Is that what you were missing, that you were wanting to those when?
Yeah, that's what I was, because the next resolution we're talking about had a few of them there, but all of the individual per hundred, per thousand gallons of water, those fees that are coming out, I didn't know where they were.
That, that stuff all took place, I want to say November, but either October or November, when our CAP, rural community assistance program helped us do a...
Yeah, okay, I remember that.
A water rate study.
Yeah.
And it was based on their recommendations of more industry standards and moving forward from there.
Second, Craig, seconded the motion. And do we need a roll call vote on this one? Did you tell me, Devon?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Everybody present. So, all those in favor of the amendment, ordinance number 351, as read beautifully by Larry, then vote yes by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, ordinance passes. Now we need to read regarding possible approval of a resolution to amend the fee schedule.
I'm willing to read it.
Okay, you want to make the motion, then?
Yes.
Okay.
It is resolved that whereas the City of Perry ordinance, section 1040...
Let me have you make the motion first.
Oh, motion.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we accept, this is resolution 1040.5.
Do you not have a motion?
I didn't see that, I thought I read that. Does the fee schedule one, excuse me? I move that we accept and adopt the resolution presented which amends city fee schedule regarding water and sewer charges.
And then you can read it, and we'll see who will second.
All right. It is resolved that whereas the City of Perry ordinance, section 1040.05, provides that various fees should be charged by the city in accordance with the schedule of fees established by resolution of the city council. The City of Perry does hereby adopt the following fee schedule for water uses and charges. Section 1040.09, turn-off on, off charge, non-payment turn-on charge, $50, requested turn-off charge, $30. Section 1040.10, security deposit, $75. Section 1040.11, fire hydrant rental, per hydrant annually, $225. Section 1040.115, fire hydrant use fee, first 10,000 gallons, $100, over 10,000 gallons, 100-plus, current use rate per 1,000 gallons. The fee schedule adopted herein shall be effective immediately and shall supersede any fee schedule previously adopted by the city.
May I make a point on that resolution?
Mm-hmm.
So in your actual motions, I, I added one update. Mr. Lambert called about the original ordinance that you had read, that the actual, the requested turn-off fee was a little confusing in the ordinance. So there was simple language that was corrected than in what Larry read in the ordinance. And then I addressed with everything that was going on with that ordinance and the fee schedule was sue, and she added a very quick fix, because she read exactly what Larry did about the turn-off. And she's like, "So do they have to pay to turn it back on if they're requesting to turn it off?" And so your ordinance, all it did was we, we, the requested turn-off, it's slash on, and so in the resolution to correlate with that, I just wanted to note, because you had read it, that requested turn-off on charge for 30, because the, the point of it is, is that we're not going to charge them to turn it off and to turn it on when they requested it. It's a one-time charge, and I thought that was logical, what the mayor suggested in that clarification.
Very good.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second it.
Was that you, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the fee schedule as read. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, we are moving along. We got notification from Tom Bridges before he left for Florida, that the 10-year special assessment for the ambulance service, which was established by the city in 2010, has expired. That expired with the collection of the July 1st, 2020 tax billing. He then went on, and you've got a copy in your packet, of what needs to happen to establish a new ambulance special assessment. And the first thing that needs to happen is that we have to set a public hearing. And so if you have discussion regarding that, we can certainly discuss it, but we've gotten the numbers. Joe and, and Steve Schweickert went through things, and we got hold of Guy Hubbard, and they had let us know that that per household fee would be going up this time. So based on that number, was that $65?
Yeah. Their, SESA is requesting the new special assessment to begin at $65.
So we've gotten the numbers together that were needed in order to satisfy the criteria that he put in front of us. But we need to set a public hearing, and we need to move ahead based on what you see in front of you. So if somebody has questions or discussion regarding that, if somebody's ready to make that motion in regard to the special assessment, if you would make the motion and read what Devon has put in front of us.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution presented, which sets a public hearing on February 4th, 2021, at 7:15, excuse me, 7:15 p.m. to possibly create a special assessment for ambulance service.
Keep going.
You haven't read it all.
He's got the short version.
Where's the last?
He has the short version, I'm sorry.
He doesn't have to read the whole resolution.
Okay, all right, then that'll do.
I don't have the rest of it anyways, but I would if I had.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay. It's been moved by Bob and seconded by Larry as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. So that, that will be a part of our council meeting.
Is there a concern of us, this lapsing right now, that we're not covered in the City of Perry, or...
Nope, we are on target.
Okay.
So it went through July 1st, 2020, the special assessment, but this has to be completed before the rules get through, so this should, needs to be done like beginning of May.
Gotcha.
Because we don't, yeah, we don't give it to...
So we pay in advance, basically, for the next year, and so, give the next hour.
Exactly. What happens is we, we have a total amount of what the special assessment is going to be, and we make payments to the ambulance, SESA, monthly. It's like $37.20 a month, every month. So it doesn't matter how the revenues come in from the ambulance assessment, they get a constant flow of cash every month. So it's just that we get it when we, then they get it. Right. I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the first possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 351.
Okay.
Okay, the last thing was said was that that amendment was approved. Does that not have to go to council for next, for the second reading, or the second, does it have to get brought to council a second time?
It's not approved.
It's not approved? Okay.
In the, in the ordinance, it said when it's published, it'll be approved 30 days from publication. That's part of the ordinance itself to make it active.
Okay, so this is going to be brought again to the next council, okay. I should have said passed. I understand that. Thank you for pointing that out, I misspoke. I second. Okay. Thanks, Joe. Any other business that may come before council at this time?
This is a quick question. Is this here, is this pretty thing over?
Has your interest rates from what John was reporting?
Okay. Connect into that. I still don't want to hear.
Any council member have any item for discussion or agenda items for the next meeting they'd like to talk about? We got a lot done tonight, thank you very much. And I just want to say, and I try not to cry, what a pleasure it is to work with people who can discuss opposite viewpoints and stay calm and peaceful about it. It's a pleasure to be a member of this council. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned for the time of p.m.